You have prayers for the city of East Cleveland. All of you special, all of you gifts of God. My name is Anthony Martin, councilman at large. I've been a councilman in the great city of East Cleveland for 16 years. We have our challenges, but we are prayerful and hopeful people. So we're going to get started and we're going to open with a prayer. Reverend Stevenson? Frank Stevenson? Come on up. Link's Baptist Church.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us pray. My heavenly Father, all merciful, all knowing and loving God, we come once again, Lord, first to just say thank you for you being God, Almighty yourself. My heavenly Father, we come now praying for the city of East Cleveland. My heavenly Father, we need your guidance. We need your understanding to make the right decisions about the city of East Cleveland and the people of East Cleveland. But we know that you are an awesome God and that you can do all things but fail. So we put all our trust in you, Almighty God, knowing that you can bring us through. My heavenly Father, sometimes things look dark, but we know that the light is coming soon. For we know that darkness cannot always prevail, but light must come. And we come now, Lord, with prayer, thanking and praying for all the administrators and councilpeople of East Cleveland that they will make the right decisions about this city. Pray for the governor and everyone that's involved, Lord, for we know that we turn to you because you are really the only answer that there is. And we give all praise, honor, and glory to your holy name. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. We're going to hear our mission statement from Reverend Jackie Goodrich.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The East Cleveland Citizens Citywide Organization. It is the mission and the purpose of this organization to improve the quality of life in East Cleveland area and to empower the residents through direct and active participation in the governing of our city. The East Cleveland Citizens Citywide Organization is charged with helping to fulfill the needs of its members to improve community and sell through action, knowledge, and involvement. By working to assess needs rather than blame, it is the mission of this organization to seek areas where individuals and group action can make a difference to improve life in the community and to serve as an example for all communities seeking help from within. It is not from them we seek, but ourselves. Everyone can be grateful because everyone can serve. And the acronym for speakers S: Speak out on issues that affect you and your community; E: Educate and update yourself on current issues and candidates; R: Register to vote, vote by mail, and change your addresses if necessary; V: Voting is mandatory. You have the option to vote early if you choose. And I say voting is mandatory because we owe it to our ancestors. E: Engage others in the process. Please, everyone, get involved. Because to them, if you don't vote, you don't count.
Thank you. She hit it right on the nail. After all said and done, it boils down to a vote. So your vote does count. So we ask that you vote, and you vote often. Our next speaker is... She's from Key Bank. Her name is Carolyn White. She's assistant vice president of Collinwood Branch. She's just going to talk about the Heritage Program, which we spoke about at our last meeting. And I also found this out today. Carolyn White is a council member in the village of Sheffield. So give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. Key Bank is headquartered here in Cleveland, and we pride ourselves on being a community bank. So I thank Ms. Walcott for inviting me here to speak with you today and to let you know how we can help you to keep your home values, your property up, get your homes repaired and remodeled at a very, very low cost. I'm here to talk to you today about Key Bank is one of only two banks that partner with the Cleveland Restorations Society. And what they do is they offer very low-cost loans to help you to do pretty much anything that you want to do to your home. That includes the inside and the outside. Major qualification is your home has to be at least 50 years old. And most of the homes here probably would fit that criteria, I heard somebody say. So, and they won't... The other thing is they won't let you do anything to make it like super moderate, like aluminum siding, you know, windows. They can get windows, but it has to be within standards because they want to keep the historical look of the home. So the procedure for that is basically to stop in, to meet with them, and tell them what you would like to do. Make sure your project qualifies. We actually had somebody speak to us at our branch managers meeting, and he basically said, "It's easier to tell you what doesn't qualify." So pretty much everything qualifies what you want to do, inside, outside. They do installations. I mean, a lot of homes can save you a lot of money with that. New roofs, kitchen, bathroom remodels, painting. There's quite a bit that they do for you. And the law's... The good news about it is in the city of Cleveland, the interest rate is 1.4%. That's, you know, basically giving you the money for little or nothing and helping you to get your homes in good shape. Outside the city of Cleveland, it's 2%. So we definitely can help you, and they are partnering with us. The other qualification, though, is you have to have some equity in the home, depending on how much your project costs. So you would meet with them, tell them what you would like to do. They would tell you if you qualify. Then you would come call me at seven o'clock that you would like to come in, and then I will continue the process, and we will work on your behalf to make sure you get the home looking the way that you would like for it to look. The other program that we offer at Key Bank that I wanted to mention, sometimes I meet with people when they don't have equity in the home, meaning that they still owe mortgage or they have a home loan out on the home. We offer what's called the Help Loan. And it's a home improvement loan. It's actually through the city of Cleveland, and they are in quite a few communities, but definitely Cleveland, East Cleveland. And our loans at this time, it's also a low-cost loan. And our current rate on that particular loan, and you don't have to have equity in the home, you do have to have decent credit, so, you know, keep that in mind. If you want to fix up your home, that's just the perfect thing to do. If it's not secured by your property, the current rate is 3.6%. So we are here to help. When I meet with the folks at East Cleveland, the first thing I do is look up your property value, and then I make a recommendation to you which is the best way to go. And if you would just like to meet with me before meeting with them, if you have any questions outside of what I made with to say to you today, I'm going to leave some cards on the table. Or if anybody would like some cards, now you can call me. We can talk over the phone, and I'll be happy to set an appointment to meet with. Thank you very much for having me. Councilman Martin wanted me to give you my phone number. If you have a pen, you can write this down. I'll give you a couple seconds to get your pens out. And again, he mentioned that I'm at the Collinwood Branch. It's on 152nd, right next door to McDonald's. My phone number, this is my direct phone number, 216-5... I'm sorry. Okay. You probably have one of those purses like I do. You can't find anything when you need it, right? Ready? And remember, Key is a community bank, and we do reach out in many other ways because we do want to service our folks in the Cleveland area and especially our neighbors. Carolyn White. Like the color. Thank you very much. You have a question, ma'am?
No questions. I just need you to repeat that number again, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. White. We're going to move to our keynote, and I need to say a few things before that. First of all, we have our challenges, as you know, but we can never give up hope. The race does not belong to the swiftly healing doors. Cassie Pittman returned to Cleveland or East Cleveland, the place that sparked her inquiring mind to teach as an assistant professor of sociology just miles from the places she first learned about relationships among race, economics, and inequality. A native of East Cleveland, Pittman grew up on a racially and socially economically diverse street in the Forest Hill area. Pittman saw the full spectrum of social conditions and how they affected life. She gained even more perspective from her mother, who worked for Public Housing Authority, and picked up her questioning mind from her dad, also a sociology major in college. Pittman attended East Cleveland Public Schools until the fourth grade, when she switched to the private schooling. She later attended halfway ground, giving her an eye-opening perspective into social inequality. "I saw smart kids in East Cleveland who didn't have the economic resources to succeed, and then saw kids at the private school who succeeded despite not being as smart," Pittman said. "I found that social, structural conditions shape outcomes." Pittman later left Cleveland to pursue a bachelor's degree in sociology at the University of Pennsylvania and a PhD from Harvard University. Give it up to her. Give it up. The studies look at how racial minorities, and particularly African-Americans, manage contemporary forms of racism. Part of her research objective is to paint a picture of middle-class African-Americans by focusing on their attitudes, experiences, and consumption preferences. She explores the underlying social and cultural processes that affected racial minorities in economic behavior, examining blacks experiencing consumer and mortgage mark, the mortgage market. Some of the questions I ask, what are the barriers for African-Americans, and how do they contend with this social position? How do African-Americans think about social mobility in the time of President Obama, she explained. After recently completing a postdoctoral at Ohio State University, Pittman was excited to move back and teach in the same city that influenced her so much. She is a special young lady. She's a dynamic young lady. And if you know anything about the history of East Cleveland, her father was the first mayor and the city council former governor of East Cleveland, Darryl Pittman. Without any further ado, give it up!
Thank you so much. It is truly, it is truly an honor to be here. And that was probably one of the best introductions. Thank you so much, Councilman Martin. So complimentary, and it really was touching. So as Councilman Martin said, I grew up in East Cleveland, and I'm proud to be from East Cleveland, okay? I have a great deal of pride. I love East Cleveland. It's a phenomenal place. And even though I've been away all these years, going out in the world to better myself, coming back, I feel like coming back to East Cleveland is coming home. And I see here my neighbors, Darryl Fields, Judge Johnson, my brothers who grew up in East Cleveland also, who are now homeowners in East Cleveland. So I have a lot of ties to East Cleveland. Even though I've been away, East Cleveland has always been in my heart. And it is, and I honestly can say, I think very highly of East Cleveland, and I've studied all different types of neighborhoods throughout the United States and also internationally. So looking at different types of neighborhoods, I think we really have something that's very special here. And I'm also just very proud to be from East Cleveland. As Councilman Martin stated, my research looks at racial inequality. So I focus on the experiences of African-Americans and particularly some of the challenges that they face being utterly noble. So what are the sort of economic challenges? What are the social structural conditions? Really examining racial inequality. And I think that gives me a certain lens to look at East Cleveland and some of the challenges that East Cleveland faces as a majority-black community in a large racially segregated metropolitan area. And so I'm going to, in some sense, not prescribe any solutions tonight, but try to address the question of what is the future of East Cleveland from the perspective of sociologists. So as a social scientist, what are some of the sort of insights that I can lend to the question that might help as we move forward? Because I'm a member of a community here. As we move forward to really address the question, and we have a huge sort of critical issue that is in front of us, this idea of sort of dissolving East Cleveland, right? So the end of the line in some respects, we have to really consider our options at this sort of critical juncture. So what I hope to do today is really to address sort of three things. What are some of the challenges facing the city of East Cleveland? So really taking that sociological lens, taking a broader perspective, what are some of the challenges that East Cleveland is facing? And how does it sort of compare to other cities, right? And particularly to our neighboring city, the city of Cleveland. What is at stake? So if we continue to exist independently, arguably, we may not necessarily lose our key central institutions. But if we are to essentially, if Cleveland is to sort of take over East Cleveland, arguably, there are things that we may lose. And even though there might be things that we gain, we have to really have a discussion about what is at stake, what are the risks, and what do we stand to gain? I think these are critical questions that we have to ask ourselves before we embark on this sort of decision. Once we sort of make this decision, there really is no turning back, right? So before we make this critical decision, we really have to ask ourselves, what is at stake? What are the risks? What do we stand to gain? Lastly, I think this is sort of an important question. Who will determine our future? Who will be at the table? So if this annexation movement or effort is successful, there will be a commission established to negotiate the terms of annexation, and we need to know what will be discussed? What were, what were the terms and conditions of that negotiation, right? We need to have an understanding of who is going to be there and who is going to represent our interests in this negotiation, which is essentially what the commission is charged with doing. They're charged with negotiating the terms of annexation. And even if the annexation movement fails, what is the plan for East Cleveland? Who is going to essentially be the person to determine our future? And will our interests be represented at the table? So we really need to think critically either outcome, and either outcome, we really need to be thinking critically about our future at this particular juncture. Okay, so towards the first question. What are the challenges? So East Cleveland certainly has challenges, and I think that we have to be frank and honest. This is without a doubt a particular moment in the history of East Cleveland, and we are certainly faced with challenges. However, I think it's very important to understand that the challenges that East Cleveland faces are not unique to East Cleveland, okay? So some of the problems that we see in East Cleveland are high rates of racial residential segregation, concentrated poverty, high unemployment rates. There's lots of different social indicators that I could put on this table that demonstrates how we have sort of social structural problems that are deep and embedded. And these problems didn't emerge immediately. These are sort of deep embedded problems. But these problems are not unique to Cleveland, okay? These are problems, if you look at Gary, Indiana, if you look at Detroit, Michigan, if you look at Ferguson, Missouri, I can go on. If you look at Harlem, New Harlem, a prosperous area of Manhattan, these issues are present there. Philadelphia. I can go on and on and on. These are not issues that are unique to East Cleveland. And really, I think there's a lot of discussion about whether or not we have a tax base to support the city. Well, a part of that issue is the fact that a lot of people in the city of East Cleveland are unemployed. But what are the roots of unemployment? There are these sort of deep structural issues. And we are to compare East Cleveland to the city of Cleveland, particularly to certain neighborhoods that are very adjacent. So I'm particularly familiar with Glenville. My grandparents live in Glenville, and so I've spent, I could also almost be raised in Glenville, the much time I spent with my grandparents. And if you go to my grandparents' street, they have abandoned homes. They have closed homes. They have dilapidated property. They have potholes, okay? If you look at the statistics for Glenville and you compare them to East Cleveland, and now with a switch to titles, you wouldn't, they're basically the same. So these statistics, these underlying social indicators are unlikely to change if we were to now be subsumed under the Cleveland, the jurisdiction of Cleveland, okay? I think that's important to understand. We do have these underlying social structural problems. They are deep and abiding, but it's unlikely that simply merging with Cleveland that these problems will dissolve. Our neighborhoods are not likely to change dramatically as a result of changing mayors from Gary Jordan to Frank Jackson. And I think that's a real consideration we need to take in, into our consideration as we make any sort of decision about whether or not we should, you know, think about that as an option. So just looking at our social statistics, these indicators are quite parallel to many Cleveland neighborhoods, particularly to the neighborhoods that we are most adjacent to. So if East Cleveland were to merge, we would likely be, we would likely split, and part of East Cleveland might become a part of the ward that is with, you know, adjacent to Glenville. So if you look or ask, do you know people in Glenville? Are you satisfied with your services? Do you feel like your mayor and your councilman is representing your interests? Is heeding your call? Is providing opportunities for economic development in your neighborhood? I just would like to suggest that as something that we all can do in our sort of information gathering. But it's also, I think, really important to really think about what is already said by some of the political sort of officials in the city of Cleveland. So I'm sure a lot of you have heard of Michael Plinsky. He is... Plintick, sorry. I both, anyways. I'm mispronouncing his all the time. My mom always gets on me. But Michael Plintick. So he is a 36-year councilman representing War 8. And in the Plain Dealer, just last year, he said, "In all my years of public office, I've never experienced such a breakdown in the level of city services. Quality of life services, street repair, grass and waste collection, care for abandoned property, police protection have never been this bad." And that includes when we were in default. So this is not my perceptions from going down my grandparents' street, which I do at least once a week. This is the councilman, this is a councilman from the city of Cleveland talking about the state of affairs in the city of Cleveland. Similarly, Councilman Kevin Comwell stated, "Two billion of our residents are surrounded by boarded-up homes, crime, poverty, and hopelessness. Taxes and the price of government are high, services are low, and their houses are narrow, so little, they can't afford to fix them up." So you don't have to take my word for it. If you're thinking about, you know, annexation, Cleveland taking over East Cleveland as an avenue for increased service provision, I think it probably would be good to talk to people who live in Cleveland and/or to hear from councilmen about the level of services. And this is not to condemn Cleveland. I think of Cleveland as like a sister city, right? They're not our enemies, right? They share the type of problems that we share. They have suffered a huge loss of population. So that's one of the sort of statistics people talk about, East Cleveland. We've had a huge decline in population. So have Glenville. They have the same loss of population, okay? This is a common phenomenon, depopulation. So simply merging with the city of Cleveland won't mean that all of a sudden we have a dramatic increase in the number of residents in our communities. They don't have that, okay? I think that's important to know. Now, this is not to say Cleveland isn't great. I love Cleveland. I'm proud. I just came back for my 10-year anniversary from college, and, you know, we're on the East Coast. I am a staunch defender of Cleveland. I'm constantly telling people of the great things that are happening in our city. I would take people when they come from out of town, down at East Forest Street or to Playhouse Square, to show off East Cleveland. But I also, being from Cleveland, know that there are certain neighborhoods that are not being developed. And I think if East Cleveland were to merge, obviously, I can't say definitively, but we really would have to take this into consideration. If East Cleveland is, I'm sorry, this telephone was distracting. If East Cleveland is considering this idea that our services will be improved, and we look to our sort of adjacent neighbors, and we don't see that happening there, why would East Cleveland all of a sudden become a priority? Why would the challenges that we're facing all of a sudden shift? I think that is a very important question to ask. And really, I think if you look to research, the problems that both Cleveland and East Cleveland face aren't problems that any local municipality can solve. So in many ways, our mayor and the council, their hands are tied, okay? And these are problems that are deeply rooted, and they really will require an intervention from government at all levels. So I think really, if we're trying to resolve these sort of deep problems that East Cleveland faces, we need to turn to our federal leadership. We need to turn to our senators. Both senators from the state of Ohio sit on the U.S. Senate Finance Committee. That's one of the most powerful committees in the U.S. Senate. So if we would like to see changes in the city of Cleveland and the city of East Cleveland, we cannot rely simply on Mayor Jordan or the council. We have to turn to our national government. We have to turn to our state government. Currently, the state of Ohio is sitting on $1.5 billion surplus, okay? Last time I checked, my license said I was a citizen of Ohio, okay? East Cleveland, Ohio. So if Ohio has a $1.5 billion surplus, there is absolutely no reason why there ever should be anyone saying that we might not have a functioning ambulance. I live in America. This is not Iraq. We should have functioning ambulances. We should have basic services, particularly if our state has a $1.5 billion surplus. Governor Kasich is, I think he needs to play an active role in our recovery. And it's, I think, important that we sort of call him out and ask him, I mean, he's considering taking a run among so many other Republican candidates for presidency. So I think it is an important and critical time also for his, for him, you know, to really demonstrate, hey, if you have a poor community, if you have a majority-black community, do you let them go without basic services and amenities while you sit on a $1.5 billion surplus? Or do you take an active role in cultivating industrial growth or job growth or educational, advocate for educational opportunities so that people who maybe once worked in manufacturing can retool and, you know, switch professions and go into an industry that's growing, like, for example, nursing? So there's lots of things that could be done, but I really think, you know, a lot of, a lot of the sort of bickering that we see is at the local level, and we as citizens need to start demanding more of the people who represent us, not just at a local level, but at a state level and at a federal level. So I think those are some of the challenges and maybe some of the ways that we might think about overcoming them in the future. The second kind of question that I wanted to address is really a consideration of what is at stake. So before we make any decision in life, we really have to evaluate the risks that a decision may make. Normally, when you stay with the state... Normally, when you stay with the status quo, the status quo doesn't necessarily present any additional harm. You know what you're dealing with, right? It's better the enemy you know than the enemy you don't know. So I think it is important to know what is at stake, what are the, what are the sort of services and amenities that we now enjoy as municipality that we would lose if we were to sort of dissolve as a municipality and to merge as sort of fractured, fractured sort of political entity that is maybe part of one board and part of another? So what is at stake? I think one of the most critical things that is at stake, which I knew, I am a recently returned person to East Cleveland, right? So I just started my job in August. But in all the sort of community forums that I've gone to, no one is talking about the idea that in order to merge with the city of Cleveland, we will essentially lose political power, okay? I think this is a very, and maybe I'm sort of thinking about this from a theoretical perspective, but it may be also, you know, after watching the cell phone movie, I think we cannot underscore this point, that essentially, if Cleveland were to subsume East Cleveland, that we would go from having a say and electing two councilmen, or two councilpeople at large, and also a councilperson from our ward, so three out of five, three out of five, having a say and electing three out of five councilpeople, to electing maybe one person. So in the city of Cleveland, a ward constitutes 25,000 citizens. So essentially, we have five people representing around 18,000 citizens. If we were to move to Cleveland, there's, that's not even enough citizens to constitute one ward, okay? So if we were to switch, or not switch, if Cleveland were to sort of subsume East Cleveland, we would lose our say. We would lose our ability to elect people who represent our interests. Now, the people who are elected may not do the best job, but guess what? That's why we have a say to elect someone new, right? So this is very important. It's not just about disenfranchisement. So disenfranchisement is not just about losing the right to vote. So we know all these efforts were, and tactics were ensued to sort of ensure that African Americans were prevented from voting. So poll taxes, literacy tests, but also if you are reducing the amount of people who we can elect who represent our interests, this is also sacrificing political power. This is also a loss of political power. And I think that is something that we should consider. If we were to go forth with annexation, I think we need to really consider this as sort of an important question. Is this something that we're willing to forego? Some of our political power, some of our access to people who are there to represent our interests? I think this is a question that we need to think about, particularly when we consider, what are some of the types of things that are at stake? Now, I can't name all the things that are at stake, but I think this is something that's very important. Maybe it is ideologically important, but I think it is still important, and I really wanted to raise it as a concern that we leave here thinking about. And the last sort of central question, there are also, I will just say, there are other things that I think are at stake too. And one of the things that I'd like to mention, particularly because I teach a class on criminology, and I feel like it would be remiss not to mention this, considering the high rate in which we incarcerate African American men. East Cleveland has a municipal court. That means that when someone commits a misdemeanor, they go before someone who we elect, right? They go before someone who's a resident of our community. They go before someone who can provide services and, and does provide services. So we have a court who provides a number of rehabilitative and also programs to reduce racism, to give people a second chance. So this is something we could lose, and I think this is important to think about. If you have your son, instead of going before Judge Johnson, they're sitting downtown. Does some judge have no conscience, or maybe only a thought, an idea of East Cleveland as a time-ridden place? That might affect the sort of sentence that they are given, and that subsequently, that sentence might subsequently affect their life from here on out. So having a municipal court is not something that we should just forego so easily. I think it's also another essential sort of consideration that we should at least really have an active debate and discussion. Is this something that we're willing to forego? Is this something that we're willing to sacrifice? Okay, so then the last sort of question that I think is sort of important to bring up, whether or not these, so there's been sort of a great deal of effort pushing for the idea of annexation. And if this effort is successful, we really need to make sure we have somebody at the table advocating for what's in our best interest. So time and time throughout history, we've seen African American communities who are defrauded and deceived, particularly when there is valuable land, valuable land in state, right? And I think from an, from a perspective of a social scientist, this happens often. So East Cleveland sort of fits a mold, where you have a community that's suffering, that has a great deal of poverty, that deals with a number of social ills, but they have something of value, right? And so what we see happening then is there's interest in the community, but not really of creating jobs, but simply of, of, you know, securing that land. And I think, you know, it seems like that might be the case, and I think we need to really make sure if this movement for annexation moves forward, whoever is elected or appointed as commissioner really negotiates terms and agreements that serve our interests and that we're at the table. And so for example, one of the things that I think is important to consider is this land, right? So East Cleveland, according to Michael Smidley at a NOAA meeting, he said that East Cleveland has engaged $5 million worth of demolition, and they now own 48% of this land, this land that's slated for development. The city of East Cleveland owns that, okay? So what happens to the land that East Cleveland owns if East Cleveland is taken over by Cleveland? I think that is an important question. And I will say, we know that there is interest in this land. So Wes Finch, who is the chairman of the Finch Group, which is a developer, and he says, you know, University Circle clearly needs to expand, and there's a significant amount of available land at reasonable prices in East Cleveland. I've been saying for a while, I think Cleveland is booming. The only people who don't seem to know that are the people who live here, especially in University Circle. The major cities out there, they're expanding and growing, and there are 1,400 kids who come in every year as an intern, a resident, a researcher, a fellow. From what I've seen, 60% can afford these higher rents. Demand continues to eclipse supply. So this is from a developer. Okay, so Mayor Jordan, just a year ago, said similarly the same thing. He said, "There is demand out there for people to locate in East Cleveland. There is a demand, quite frankly, and more specifically, for people to locate as physically close to University Circle as possible. We are the only game in town that comes to land near University Circle." So it seems to me, and I'll wrap up, because I don't want to go over in time, but it seems to me that at this moment, what we need to come together to strengthen our sort of political unity, there are sort of, sort of, at this critical juncture, there is a movement, something to divide our community. So not to unite us oriented around thinking about the future of East Cleveland, but really to push forth this idea of annexation without addressing these sort of critical issues. And that again raises this question of who will be there to determine what's in our best interests? And when we think about the future of East Cleveland, and we think about future generations, we have to think about what does the future hold? Now, I don't think development is bad. So for example, I work at Case Western Reserve University, and when us new faculty get together, people are always asking about what's going on in East Cleveland. They want to buy houses, they're interested, they're curious about East Cleveland. I think it would be great to have people like myself and my colleagues being able to buy houses, to renovate them, and live in East Cleveland, and also be proximate to work. I think that's something that will increase our revenues, will contribute to the growth of the city. But the question is, if we merge with the city of Cleveland, who will benefit from that? So this is probably going to happen, whether, you know, development will happen, but will we gain from it? I think that is an important question to raise. And so I will sort of, I will sort of conclude with that. But I think it's also important, you know, we really have been presented with enough arguments for why the idea of Cleveland, subsume East Cleveland, will serve to benefit us. So I haven't heard any substantial claims as to what we can gain, right? So I think this is also an important question. So maybe it is in the best interest of East Cleveland. I don't necessarily see it that way, but if it is in the best interest of East Cleveland, at least articulate to me why it is so, okay? So, you know, we've heard a lot from the mayor, but I think we need to also hear from some of the other people who initiated the petition for annexation. Why do they think this is in our best interest? We need to really hear from people who are arguing for this. And I really think one of the goals, I hope, that comes from this town hall meeting is not a sort of demonization of one side or the other, but really an honest dialogue about what is at stake? Who's going to gain? What does the future hold? Who will be the people, who are the people who are going to shape what the future holds? How are critical institutions such as this library be affected? What about our smaller organizations? So my dad, he is, he gardens with the East Cleveland Community Garden. How will the East Cleveland Community Garden be affected? These are, these are important questions, and we need to have public debate and discussion. And honest, honest debate and discussion. So with that, I will conclude. And again, I'm enormously grateful to be back in East Cleveland and to contribute in whatever way that I can to the city of East Cleveland, because quite frankly, I gained really the foundation of who I am from being here, from being raised here, from my neighbors, you know? It was great having neighbors like Darryl Fields and Helen Ford, who are lawyers, you know? That's great role models to have, you know? And having teachers and principals who look like me, right? And, you know, having them to reflect, to come to, which I did often as a child, and I have very fond memories of doing so. So I'm enormously grateful, and whatever I can do of service, I am more than happy to, with whatever capacity that I can. And I think it is beholden to all of us to sort of take an active stance and really do what we can, because we are at this critical juncture. And what we do will affect future generations. And so we can no longer sort of stand by on the by side, on the sideline and sort of watch. We have to sort of get engaged, get involved, and ask questions. And, you know, we don't have to be enemies. We all live in the same community together, and that's really one of the most beautiful things about East Cleveland. You know, we say, I say hi to all my neighbors, you know? And that's a beautiful thing. We don't need to be at each other's throats. We can have an honest discussion and not agree, you know? So with that, I will conclude.